Try that again.
Okay, take it. So our first phase, we are focusing on kindergarten to fourth grade. And we are focusing on early literacy and closing gaps early and providing research based instruction for all of our students. So I'm going to give you a minute just to take a look at that quote up there. So research has shown that 60% of our students will learn how to read no matter what instruction they get. But what about that other 40%, right? So out of that 40%, those 40% students need explicit and systematic phonics instruction and research based instruction in order to be successful readers. 20% of those 40% are going to have serious problems with their learning and need serious, very intensive interventions. Unless they have that systematic and explicit phonics instruction.
Okay, so how are we going to address this? We're looking at this from three prong approach or three focus areas. Before I dive into that, I'd like to take a quick look at the RTI model on the right hand side. Many of you are familiar with that, often referred to as an RTI pyramid model or an MTSS model. For the purpose of this presentation, when we're talking about tier one, we're talking about that 80%, the core classroom instruction. If we have a strong RTI model with a strong paired curriculum with assessments, 80% of our students should be performing at grade level or above. 15% may need additional intervention and 5% might need scientific research based small group intervention, really targeted instruction. For today's presentation, we're talking about that core program, that tier one, right in the classroom, what's going on in the classroom. So we're going to approach this, like I said, with three focus areas. First, we need, we needed to update and address and make sure we have an unbiased universal screening tool. We'll talk about that in a moment. Our second focus area is to ensure we have a guaranteed and viable research based literacy curriculum, which we will talk about. And our third area is really about professional embedded professional learning for our staff.
So how do we know students are learning? So our first step was our universal screener. So New York State requires districts to have a universal screener three times per year. Our screener that we have been using the last couple of years wasn't giving us the data we needed. We couldn't tell if our students were making gains, we couldn't identify deficits. We knew we needed something different. So what we did was we developed a universal screening committee. And within that committee, we researched all sorts of different universal screeners and we narrowed it down to two. And we spent a good portion of last year piloting two universal screeners. The committee came up with one and they decided that we were going to move forward with Ames Web Plus. Now Ames Web Plus is a Ames Web Plus is a program, it's a company that focuses solely on assessing students. It is not a program and it is not tied at all to a publisher. What it does is it assesses foundational reading and math skills along with comprehension, fluency and vocabulary in our older students. It also, it also assesses foundational math skills and concepts and applications in math as well. So the purpose of this is to measure, measure individual student progress in both ELA and math. We need it to measure effectiveness of our ELA and math curriculum and our instruction. And it's also aligned to our RTI model, which is our responsive and flexible grouping, choosing students who need some support in other areas. We adopted this for our K4 this past spring. All K4 students took it this past spring. Coming up, it's going in the fall, it'll be K8. So our five through eight is adopting it in the fall as well. And then our next steps after that would be to do the same process with our nine through 12 teachers and come up with a universal screener for those grade levels as well.
Okay, our second focus area really centers around guaranteed and viable curriculum. How do we ensure that our teachers have the resources and training necessary to provide effective literacy instruction for all of our students? Before we can dive into that, we need to take a look, we needed to take a look at our current reality. We need to know the strengths and weaknesses of our current K4 program. So in spring of 2020, that first bout of COVID, if you remember, we were still able to pull off a K4 literacy audit. We partnered with BOSIS for this and we interviewed over 80 staff members kindergarten through fourth grade, teachers, administrators, coaches, specialized teachers, teaching assistants. We had representation from every single grade, every area for a very comprehensive literacy audit. It brought out some pretty significant themes that were identified from the staff. First up, that our current program is very disjointed, that's a word pulled from the actual survey, and lacking instructional materials, meaning teachers are really going out and having to search for materials to support instruction in their classroom. That's a serious concern. Next, it lacked, it lacks common assessments. Teachers continually spoke of the frustration of not having strong common assessments, not being able to compare apples to apples when you're sitting at the table and then talk about students in order to close those learning deficits. The staff also identified a need for a guaranteed and viable curriculum. And to clarify what that means, guaranteed is meaning that all students, regardless of their teacher or their school, will have access to the same content, knowledge and skills. It's leveling the playing field, it's making sure that our program has the same level of rigor, minimal rigor for all students wherever they are in our system. The other piece is making sure that it's viable, meaning that the curriculum is realistic in its scope and sequence and it's developmentally appropriate and challenging for all students. Viable also means that it's doable, that it's not so wide that we're not able to go deep on the things that are important. So having a guaranteed viable curriculum was identified as a significant area of concern. Another area that was always brought to our attention, no surprise to us, was that our current program is not aligned to the scientific research of effective literacy instruction. And when I say scientific research, this is not some new shiny new thing that's out there. Sometimes you'll hear about the science of reading and that there's a big movement around that. What it really is, is it's about the last 40 years of research about how the brain actually learns to read, how children learn to read. There are massive studies that are out there for the last 40 years. And so when we talk about the science of research, this is not a new thing that we're looking at. We're looking at the breadth of that, those studies over a 40 year plus period of best practices of instruction and best practices of how students actually developmentally learn to read throughout their ages as they grow. And another significant area of concern, again, no surprise, is that our current instructional materials have really exceeded their lifespan. Basically, if you walk into our classrooms at K4, they have materials that are literally falling apart in their hands. They've exceeded their lifespan, we need to have this addressed, we knew about this, it's part of the planning process, but that did come up as a significant concern in that, in that audit that we did. So what are we going to do about this? How are we going to address this? How are we going to provide a guaranteed viable curriculum? Let me share our timeline of what we've been doing and where we're going. So this past spring, that ELA committee spent a significant amount of time, almost the entire school year, really researching and studying what programs are out there, what's available to us. Prior to that, they had a whole year of professional learning so that the committee is well informed in order to make informed decisions. So this past year, we vetted all the available literacy programs. We actually looked at over 14 different programs. We used, we were able to narrow it down using rubrics, conversations, best practices. And we did narrow it down very clearly to the two strongest programs. And we will be piloting for this coming school year, Wit and Wisdom and Amplify CKLA or Core Knowledge Language Arts. This upcoming school year, our pilot folks in January will come together as they will throughout the entire school year. But January will be a significant point where we come together, hear about how things are going, what's working, what's not, seek feedback from all those pilot teachers. And the pilot, by the way, is all grade levels, all buildings, at least one of each in each grade level. So we've got a very significant group of people that are doing this work in order to provide us and help us make an informed decision. Also in January, that universal screening tool that Nicole mentioned, Ames Web Plus, that's going to help us in our decision. It is not our only data point, but it certainly is an unbiased data point to show us, hey, which program are our students responding the most to? That's something for us to look at and to help guide our decision. Then in February, the committee will reconvene for, I'm sure, some pretty good conversations for a decision on how to proceed moving forward. With the hope of adopting a new K4 literacy program, March of 2022, with a fall, or sorry, a spring and summer training and a fall rollout of fall 2022. So that in kindergarten through fourth grade, we will have a guaranteed viable curriculum for all of our students in K4. And most importantly, students are going to be getting what they need and teachers will have the support, materials and knowledge they need to instruct our students at the K4 level.
Our focus area three is how do we support our teachers with professional learning that improves student outcome? So in order to do that, basically, we have my position, which is the RTI literacy coordinator and our instructional coaches, which I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the board for creating these positions so we could support this very important work that we're moving towards. So this is just a few things that I do that will support teachers and their professional learning and ultimately that student outcome. So for, for what we're doing right now, I manage all the ELA and AAS resources. I provide letters training for all of our AAS teachers and letters is language essentials for teaching reading. And that teaches, that basically trains teachers on the science of reading and all of this, you know, effective literacy instruction. I coordinate instructional TAs and provide assistance and support. I act as a central point of ELA communication and communicate and oversee our phonemic awareness and our phonics program along with facilitate AAS intervention training and support and coordinate the aspects of the ELA pilot. Then we have our instructional coaches, which will be new to us this year. And they are going to be really supporting our teachers in the classroom with delivering professional development on the science of reading to our staff. They're going to assist and train our instructional TAs and like the support, all of our district initiatives, literacy initiatives. They're going to provide training and support and modeling of our Hagerty phonemic awareness and our Sunday phonics program along with supporting teachers in both of our pilot programs. And then they're also going to join BPT meetings and grade level PLCs in order to contribute to building initiatives and to really collaborate with our staff.
So before I move on, I'd just like to make a very strong point here. These are the folks that are in the schools, working directly with teachers in the classrooms, modeling lessons, providing, providing professional development. Without these, these people in the schools providing all this, there's no way that we can move our system forward. This is the key to be having a successful program is having the folks in the schools embedded there to help support our teachers and ultimately improve student learning. So moving on to grades five through 12. So grades five through, sorry, grades five through eight are going to follow a very similar path to K4. We're about one year behind with that committee. We formed that committee about a year and a half ago. They also recently committed, completed a literacy audit where we partnered with BOSIS to complete that, which identified strengths and areas of opportunities. And right now, that committee is reviewing that data and looking at paths forward of what we would focus on next. This coming school year, the committee is going to have an intensive amount of professional learning for the committee members. Again, we need to raise everyone's knowledge about middle level, five through eight literacy instruction so that we can make informed decisions. We first raised the knowledge of all the committee members, ourselves included. We will then research available literacy programs. We will identify again the two strongest programs and we'll plan some pilots. Looking at the following school year, we hope to pilot literacy programs at the middle level and ultimately adopt a new program wherever the committee lands on that with hopeful implementation during the 23, 24 school year. And teachers have asked, you know, can we move this up? I actually had some teachers on a meeting recently, can we make this faster? My response to that is, we need to do this right. We need to make sure we're taking the time, we're vetting things, we're having the conversations and making the most informed decisions because this is a major decision for our district and ultimately our students to ensure their learning. So we're confident we can support this timeline. Looking ahead to grades nine through 12, that's really a focus on college and career readiness. So the biggest piece there is shifting from the New York State Common Core standards over to the New York State Next Generation standards. At K8, that is fully aligned. We do follow the New York State, State Ed implementation timeline. We are on, we are on target for that. That follows a one year cycle. So in 23, in 2023, grade nine needs to be aligned. In 2024, it's grade 10 and so on. So we are on cycle, there is a plan in place to make sure we're fully aligned to that. Next, in grades nine through 12, this winter, we hope to review the academic screening tool that's currently used in 912. The committee quickly identified that 912 has different needs. And so we tabled that in order to form a high school focused committee to review different screening tools to make sure our teachers have what they need to identify deficits and help close those gaps for students at the high school level. Moving forward, this winter through summer 2022, the teams will continue to identify essential standards by grade level and or course. And we'll also be working on aligning our assessments to the next generation standards this summer. So again, we follow the timeline, but we also start working toward full implementation of essential standards. And that's been ongoing work. And then finally, there's, there's the possibility of adopting a new screening tool next fall for the 912. And again, we'll see where that committee lands and, and the outcome of that.
So while putting all of this in place, we have to be mindful that we need to continue to measure our progress. We have to continue to monitor and adjust our pacing, our assessments and our curriculum. And in order to do that, we are going to put data protocols in place so we can analyze our common assessments, our state assessments and our universal screening assessments. We're also going to continue with our ELA 2.0 committees in order to do that work. And we, we know that we have to be mindful of working on what needs adjusting on a continuous basis with our ELA curriculum. So ultimately, in order to achieve our vision of all students being skilled readers and being prepared for graduation, we need to monitor students' learning and embrace the continuous improvement model.
That continuous improvement model will continually push us towards our goal of ensuring we have 100% reading efficiency for every student in our district at every grade and nothing less. So with that, are there any questions or comments from the board?
Just, I do have a quick question, so I want to make sure I understand this right. So I think what I'm hearing in fall, I'm going to talk about K4, just going back, fall of 2022 is when you expect to have the horizontal alignment, I gotta do the visual here with the guaranteed viable curriculum.
Yes, that's correct.
Would that include the common assessments too at that?
Yep, yep, both programs have a strong assessment component. That was a major part of what we were looking for in our program.
That's wonderful, thank you. And do you expect 58 to lag about a year behind that?
Yeah, the plan, I mean, we'll see how this year plays out with that committee. That is the goal and the timeline I projected about a year ago. So we're on track right now.
All right, thank you. Other questions?
Yes.
Yep.
First of all, thank you for this presentation. Shows for what we've been doing in the region. Also, very important when we talked about including teachers in the ELA committee and also pilot committee and also many teachers will be involved. It's important to have our staff involved in the whole process. So thank you, it's an honor. What program are we using at this time and how long can we use this program?
You want to take that one? All right.
So currently, we are what you might call a balanced literacy approach to reading. However, what we have been using, a balanced literacy approach covers the core five. So it covers your phonemic awareness, your phonics, vocabulary, your comprehension and your fluency. Our students, our teachers right now have just a room full of beautiful authentic literature. And they were given PD on how to do a workshop model to work with our students. They were not given a phonemic awareness component or a phonics component. So basically, that, that was in our, our audit, we realized just how much we are missing. This year, the teachers who are not piloting, we have brought in that Hagerty phonemic awareness component and we've brought in that phonics component. So now it really is more of a balanced literacy approach.
Yeah, because we, as board members know, we have each school come into a presentation very impressed with the Hagerty phonemic awareness that I saw most of the things. My concern, but just the concern I have is I'm anxious to see and I would like you to come back or somebody come back with the assessments. Our children have been for a year and a half now, different kind of education. I'm very anxious to see what the assessment would show. You know, we've been worried about social development, so about the social performance. But I also hope it is so important, running so, I'm anxious to be able to have a presentation, you know, six months or whatever about where our children are.
And, and Bob, I'm going to just comment on that because it's really, I mean, you hit nail on the head with that. And that's where that universal screening tool is so important. We've known that the tool we've had in the past is not giving us any amount of what we need. This new tool is well vetted and what I find, one of the things that I wanted to make sure when we implemented, that it isn't tied to any programs, it's not tied to any publishers. It is an independent evaluation tool to help us determine where those gaps are so that we can appropriately respond.
Yes.
Question for you. It looks like it's going to take a few years to reach the high school. And I've said year and a half of those high school students, they may have some issues. They may graduate before this even touches the high school. Do you have an outlet for those who are struggling over the next few years in the high school community?
Yeah, no, that, that's an excellent question and they're not, it's not a, we're forgetting them. Currently at the high school, we do have academic intervention services there for students that are struggling in ELA. So they do get small group support. That continues all the way through our entire system of K12. And it's not that we haven't been focusing on the high school either. We, the high school is, 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 the struggle at the high school is that at that point, we're expecting our students there to be reading and comprehending on grade level and they're reading text at 10th grade level, 11th grade level. And the teachers at that level don't have the, the training or the support needed to, you know, when you have a student who's a non-reader, what do you do? So we are working very closely. And that's where that universal screening tool where we talk about at the 912, 12 level, why that's so important for us to get in place as well. So we have things in place, those will continue as they are. And we will continually work on that level next in order to address those areas of deficit. Because obviously, we want to close those gaps as we build the foundation up.
First off, I just wanted to thank you. But I was really interested in wait for some. I've been doing a little research, I did see like there's a lot of boards that got popping up, like on hard hitting, more mature and fast peaks. My question is, when it comes to these kids, like how much difference is this curriculum compared to our last curriculum? This seems like there's a lot more nonfiction, American history, like things that we didn't really teach back in our old curriculum. How much difference?
CKLA, yeah. Do you want me to take some of that? You want to do some of that?
We can start. We, we both. So both programs that we are piloting actually are very content heavy. So we've done a lot of research on what, we've done a lot of research on how important it is for students to have content and content knowledge in order to comprehend and, you know, enrich their vocabulary as well. So both of these programs are very, very content heavy, very nonfiction heavy. They're both very rigorous and they're a lot different than anything we've seen before because it really, it really does focus on building background knowledge. So students are able to, to learn from that. And each grade level for both programs builds on each other. So you might introduce it in kindergarten, but then it goes, that same concept goes a little bit higher in first and then second and third. So it just continues to build upon each other.
Sure, I don't know if you got others, but I'll just, I'll add one other point that's really important with that because we don't want to scare students or parents with that it's, that it's content heavy. Yes, it is content heavy, but we know by going to other schools in our surrounding area, talking with teachers, talking with students, the students love it. It is, it is definitely rigorous, but a lot of that rigor comes from those rich read alouds where the teacher at the younger grades reads the text, has a discussion on it. The students get really engaged to the point that we know students then go to the library and ask the school librarian, hey, I'd like to know more about the Roman Empire. I learned about it in class, that, that excitement is there. And, and so the excitement piece is a big component. But the other piece is we want to level the playing field for all of our students coming in the door. We know students of poverty are going to come in with much lower vocabulary, working vocabulary than students who are not of poverty. This is one of the ways to do that because the programs build that knowledge base from the ground up. When you enter kindergarten, you are, you are, you are exposed to rich literature in a comprehensive manner, as Nicole spoke of, that spirals. So we're building all of their vocabulary from the ground up, which we know is a significant area we need to address, certainly for our higher poverty students. So those are a few components of it. It is going to be a big shift. Currently, right now, a lot of our program, the workshop model with balanced literacy relies on students selecting books of interest. And certainly, there will still be the ability to do that, but this will have more direct explicit instruction from teachers. It's certainly a more rigorous level, but we also know that students respond really well and enjoy it. And that's an important piece for us to consider as well.
Okay, no more questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, we have our fiscal update with Mr. Keegan, review our fund balances and proposed reserves. Mr. Keegan, can you turn your microphone on?
Good evening. All right, that worked better. All right, well, my, my goal for, our goal for, for tonight is to share with you, as we do every year, information about our fund balance and our proposed reserves. In hopes that at the end of the presentation, we have a better understanding of the financial condition of the school district. And I want to emphasize the word estimated fund balance. What I'll be sharing with you tonight are audited numbers, our auditors haven't completed their field work. And we're still in discussions with a few items. And so without further ado, you know, our goal, one of the things we look at is, is, you know, certain factors and considerations. And obviously, the board and our leadership have talked about, our goal is to provide financial resources that allow for high quality and sustainable instructional programs. Our responsibility, which rests often Our responsibility, which rests often with the board and cabinet, is to manage our district financial resources in an efficient and effective manner while working within the tax cap. We've talked a lot since the tax cap came out about the tax cap. And, you know, our thought process is we need to plan today to avoid the need to go out to the community and ask for above tax cap increases. And so I want to, I want to just remind everybody that the maximum tax levy increase to cover inflation is 2%. And while that seems like a high number, and it, we certainly have been lucky that our inflation's been low, we need to prepare for a future where inflation is higher than 2%. Another big consideration is that our, the first 2% of either ERS or TRS is not covered by the tax levy at the cap. So that's our employee retirement system and our teachers' retirement system. When I say 2%, I'm not talking about a 2% increase, I'm talking about a 2% rate increase. 2% of ERS and TRS for us is about $1.6 million a year. And none of that, that can't be passed on to the taxpayers. So, so again, if our, if our goal is not to ask the taxpayers for above tax cap increases, unless we have to, which we're trying not to, we need to be doing some planning today so we can avoid those increases later. Another, another big factor that I, that I think we need to be thinking about is that, you know, everybody knows we don't, we don't, we're not involved in tax assessments in terms of assessed values of property, and, and we don't get involved in equalization rates. That's the measure of how good the assessments are within our community. But these things determine how school taxes are allocated to individual taxpayers. And right now, we've all witnessed in the last couple of years, a really volatile real estate market. And whenever there's volatility in the real estate market, our exposure to tax surcharge claims increases. So that kind of makes sense, right? If someone's assessment goes up a lot, they might come in and say, hey, this isn't what my house is worth. I should have a reduced assessment. And when, when those things happen, albeit even though we're not involved, we have to pay back the taxes that are assessed. The other factors, healthcare costs, we've, these are, again, factors that impact our financial condition. Healthcare costs have consistently increased above inflation, at a rate above inflation. It's a lot due to high cost pharmaceuticals. If you looked at our healthcare costs and everybody's healthcare costs, pharmaceuticals are, are the driving force. But there's also new treatments like gene and immunotherapy, which can, you know, for each patient, for each, you know, time that these things are given can be millions of dollars. But, and, you know, which was hard, hard to believe, but US healthcare spending was down actually in 2020. And I think, I think, and what people are saying is because of the pandemic, it put the brakes on a lot of elective things, a lot of procedures that people would have. And we've also been fortunate here at North Syracuse that our increases in healthcare have been lower than the national trends, as well as lower than our budgeted amounts. And I, I know I'm, just want to cover this, this, this point with you because it's important to understand it. What we do is we have an outside firm that looks at our, our healthcare costs, and they calculate what's called a premium equivalent. And they do this so that we can bill our employees for health insurance. But that is not the basis for our annual budgeting. And the reason we, we budget at a little higher rate is that the current law does not allow the district to establish any kind of healthcare reserve. So we're, we're kind of exposed. If one of those big immunotherapy or gene therapy things happen, or, or something happens, we have to draw money from somewhere else to cover health insurance. So we set our employee premiums based on history, based on trends. We set our budget at a little bit higher to kind of think about that worst case scenario. And fortunately, as you think about the district's financial condition, we've been operating better than the industry and, and better than our budget. And, and this other factor that healthcare spending's been down in 2020, and this chart maybe beats this dead horse, horse one more time. But this is healthcare spending since 2010 by quarter. And it just shows, you can see those rates every quarter are basically higher than inflation. And you can see in 2020, or you can see that huge drop in healthcare spending. And so why do I tell you all this, all the, the stuff? Because when you think about fund balance, what, what causes fund balance? Well, that's when we spend less than we take in in revenue. We have extra, and that extra goes into fund balance. So I want to walk you through what happened with our revenues. What happened on the, on the revenue side? So the first line there is our budgeted revenues for the 2021 school year, 172 million. And, and you remember, we started the year out saying, hey, we, we're going to spend 5 million of our savings to balance this budget. So let's, we weren't expecting to receive that as revenue. We were going to take that out of our own bank account. So we're expecting about 167 million in revenues. We actually received 171, or about $3.6 million more than we expected. So the logical question is, where did that money come from? Well, it came from a couple of sources that we've outlined in the bottom of this slide. We received about $806,000 more in state aid. One of the areas was in our high cost excess cost aid for our special ed population. Another was the CARES Act money. Remember when the budget was put together, we talked about, hey, the state doesn't have enough money. Therefore, the federal government's going to come in and give you $1.4 million. Well, the state ended up miraculously having a lot better year than, than they expected, and they were able to pay out more aid. BOSI's refund, we had a BOSI's refund of $1.3 million that we received this year that related to the prior year. And I said, well, why is that? Well, because we closed schools down, and we couldn't take advantage of BOSI's services. So we got a refund. And one thing that's nice about BOSI's and the way they operate is, you know, we put our budget together, but if we don't spend the money in the budget, or they don't spend the money, they give it back to us. They're not allowed to have a fund balance at BOSI's. They have to refund back to the districts. So we ended up with $3.6 million of excess revenue. Let's shift to, to expenses. So our expenditures were that same budget, 172.5 million. Our actual expenditures were about 161 million. So we're 11 million favorable to, to our budget. So let's dive into that for a minute. The biggest single thing was our benefits. When I say benefits, I'm not only talking about healthcare, it's healthcare, it's, it's, it's the dental, but it's also things like workman's comp and unemployment. Now, you might remember, we had a little bit of a crazy unemployment situation during COVID. And in the 12th hour, the federal government gave the states money so the states could give us back all the money we spent on unemployment. So we actually had no unemployment expense this year despite budgeting almost $500,000. So a few things like that happened that led, left us in a very good situation. We were $1 million underspent on our BOSI's budget for the 21 school year. TRS and ERS were favorable. Utilities, you can imagine, some of our buildings were operating. We've had very favorable, by the way, fuel and utility prices. Our usage was down, and you see the benefits there. So I could go on and on, but at the end of the day, we just spent a lot less money than we expected. And I hate to say this, due largely to COVID. So when we get back to what, what happens with fund balance? Well, we take our actual revenues and we subtract our actual expenditures, and we ended up with about $9.6 million of additions to fund balance. We started the year off with $9.7 million in fund balance. And what we're proposing to the board is that we use some of this, these additional fund balance to shore up some of our reserves. And this is to cover liabilities we know we have, that we don't have money in the bank to cover. And if we do that, that will leave us with about $12.8 million or 7.1% of unappropriated fund balance. And you might say, wow, that's, that's a high number. But remember, we're talking about doing a referendum, we, which we talked to the board about recently in December, where we would have a large capital project, and we don't want that to have a significant taxpayer impact. So we would appropriate $6 million of fund balance or recommend to the voters that they approve that $6 million of fund balance be used for that purpose. So that after that referendum, we would have $6.8 million in fund balance, or about 3.8%, which is closer to where the controller, the controller wants us to be. So now I'm going to just pause for a second because I've just given you a massive amount of information. Is there, is there any, any, any questions at this moment about the numbers I presented? Good. Let me, perfect. So let's take them one at a time. So tax surcharge, so, so the tax surcharge reserve is to pay judgments and claims relating to tax surcharge proceedings. And for those of you that are not experienced with this, this is very simply, my house was assessed at X, I think it's worth Y. My taxes were calculated based on X, I think I shouldn't pay so much in taxes. I want to protest that. And that happens both for individuals and for corporations. And so what we do is every year, we work with our attorneys, the attorneys that work with us on tax surcharge matters that represent the district's interests. And they come up with a list of exposure. And typically, we just take that list, that, that dollar amount, and we book that as a reserve. We're recommending this year that we book a little bit more. Now, let me explain that I had a long conversation with our accountants today on this. And the reason we're thinking that is if you looked at our tax calculation, you'd realize that in the town of Cicero, I think we've had a equalization rate of one most years I've been here. It's down to 0.96 right now. This, New York State is saying that the town of Cicero is a little behind on their assessments, which by the way, would make sense given the frothy market we've had. The same thing with the town of Clay. Town of Clay is not a full value assessed town, but their equalization rate has continuously been declining every year since I've been here. And so I feel like the district might have a little more exposure to tax surcharge as a result of these things that will happen over the next couple of years. And we're recommending an increase in that tax surcharge reserve of $700,000. The conversations are still continuing. We're, we're going to ask, we're not going to ask the board to approve this tonight. We just wanted to preview this with you, and, and we're going to come back to you next week with maybe a little more information on our thoughts on tax surcharge. So we have workman's compensation reserve. And as you guys might know, we're using a new consultant called NCA Comp. They've gone through all of our claims, and they literally sent us a report, as do our, our consultants every year, that lists every single workman's comp claim, our exposure, and that exposure totals $3,648,000 and requires an increase of a million five. And that will get us fully funded in terms of our workman's comp. General liability reserve, you know, coming into this year, we said we would use up that reserve, and therefore, what we did, this is kind of goofy, but this is a little inside view of the accounting world. We said to the board, hey, we're really nervous about being able to balance the budget this year because we didn't expect this windfall. We didn't expect to spend so less, little. So we came to you last year, and we said, hey, can we move $1 million from the general reserve and throw it into fund balance so we can spend it to support the budget? Well, then we didn't need it because we had the windfall. So we're saying to the board now, can we put that $1 million back into the general reserve so that it's there? It's simply restoring it back to where it was, you know, last year. The next one is the employee benefits, benefits reserve. And so as everybody knows, when an employee leaves, any employer, any employer, you know, you've got accrued vacation time, and we have to pay that. Most employers in the private sector literally have a liability on their books called, you know, accrued vacation. They got to pay that out to employees. Well, the way fund accounting works, we don't really have that. So we have the ability to set up a reserve. The other one is that employees can accrue sick time and get a, you know, some paid payment for the sick time when they leave. So we worked with our payroll department, and we ran reports, and we determined what that liability is. Now, this doesn't get us to the liability, but this at least moves us in the right direction. And so our goal is to, to increase that liability so that we have the money to pay those, those liabilities when people, when people leave. Retirement contribution reserve. So we have two of them, the new one, which is TRS that we established last year, and the ERS, which has been around for a while. We'd like to increase each of these reserves. My goal, again, in the interest of protecting the taxpayer and the tax levy and the stability of our programming, instructional programming, I would like to recommend to the board that we attempt to get at least one year of TRS and one year of ERS on our balance sheet in the form of reserves. This would allow us, if the market crashes or something happens, where our, where we need additional money to support TRS and ERS, we'd have that, those funds in reserve. And that's what, that's recommending. And then this is simply a summary of the reserves, showing you the difference between what I've, the beginning balance and what I've just talked to you about as increases, is a small amount of interest, and unfortunately, a very small amount of interest because interest rates are quite low. And then this is simply a summary of the resolutions that we just talked about, are given the, the dollar magnitude of what I've just shared with the board, we didn't think it would be appropriate to ask you to vote on this tonight. We wanted to give you time to think about it, and we would bring these, ask our district clerk to put these on the board agenda for next, next meeting. Any questions?
I just have a comment. I don't, there really is no question there. I just think it's, it's great that we can do this. And I mean, to be able to put it in reserve at a time where we also have added, put into a program. We've added positions, we're doing what we need to do. If you look at the Friday letter, we've added positions to mitigate class size. And to be able to do this without having it at the expense of anything is, is a very lucky place to be considering where we thought we were not too many months ago. So I thank you for this news.
If I could just add, thank you for saying that, Paul. It, it's, it's, it's almost unbelievable to me that I sat in front of the board in preparation for the 2122 budget, and we were worried at the time there'd be mid-year budget freezes and that we would not even get the money we expected to get in funding. It's just, it's just been a kind of a bizarre period of time. The other thing I want you to know, and Dan has emphasized this, Chris has emphasized it, and Jason as well, that we are committed to doing everything we have to do to close these gaps, and we are not putting any money in reserves at the expense of program. And we have the, the federal funds that are coming in, and we plan on deploying those in order to make sure we can support our instructional staff as well as our students. And Dan, I don't know if you had any comment on that or thoughts?
As Paul mentioned, what, what we've seen in the Friday letter, we want to make sure that our students and staff have what they need in order to make sure that they have a sound education, and we're trying to do everything possible to mitigate what's happened due to COVID.
Thank you. Yes. Yeah. And how we were going to take advantage of that. Yes. Yep. No, this was, so when we did that presentation, we had, we were kind of seeing, starting to see the writing on the wall because we knew that they were going to restore foundation aid. You know, we're kind of on the other side of the budget process, and we kind of, we kind of knew how they were going to restore foundation aid and that we were getting all this federal money and, and that we were spending less. So we kind of told you then that we thought we could put $6 million at it toward that, toward the project, toward the December referendum. And this only confirmed that we could do that. Any others?
Thank you. Any others? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keegan. Okay, at this time, we will have comments from the audience. We have three people signed up today, so I'll ask them to come up one at a time. And I'll just remind you that here in North Syracuse, we, we do have a limit of three minutes per speaker, and our clerk will be timing that for you. So first, I have Kevin Jancy. Thank you. Come up, use a microphone because it's, yeah, that way it's transmitted. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kevin Yancy. I'm a CNS community member and a family father of five. We are, in the US, are experiencing terrifying levels of control. Fake experts, fraudulent scientists, and partisans in lab coats have all lost sense, all their sense of right and wrong. We are no longer in a free country. People like Arnold Schwarzenegger and many of our tyrannical dictator leaders are now telling us, screw your freedom. You and the school board. You and the school board have decided that our kids should be mandated to be in school all day, every day with masks like muzzles and dogs. I've listened to your arguments and they are missing a few things, namely evidence, data, science, common sense and human decency. Here are the facts. COVID poses nearly no risk for our kids. 4.2 million kids have tested positive for COVID-19 over last year and a half. Point zero, zero, eight percent have died with COVID, not necessarily of COVID as a lot of them had comorbidities like leukemia. What about the flu? CDC estimates 480 kids died of flu in the 2018, 19 season. That's more than have died with COVID over the last year and a half. Did anyone on this board suggest that the kids wear masks during that time? Did your messiah's at the CDC suggest masks with flu ever? Flu is more dangerous to our kids than COVID. Do you know what it's called when you force your children to wear masks for fear of a virus that poses almost no threat to them? It's called child abuse. This is an utterly insane charade to satisfy your delusional psychotic hypochondria. Do you know what psychological damage you do to children by forcing them to cover their faces, teaching them the air is toxic and everyone around them is sick? Have you wondered about the health effects of forcing kids to breathe through sweat, spit and dirt soaked bacteria filled rags all day? What about learning to read when they can't see the teacher enunciating the words? What does it do to the child's developing immune system? Masks impair ability to learn and are harmful. Breathing in high levels of CO2 is not good for lung development. Masks also affect facial development in kids. We also have myopic kids, glasses getting fogged up, they can't see, they can't learn. They take their glasses off, they touch their face. These masks exacerbate anxiety. They cause difficulty breathing, especially with kids with asthma. They cause skin issues like acne, horrific mental issues, speaking and hearing issues. You're satisfied yet to put this burden on our children anyway and why? It's not to keep them safe. They are safe. It's not to keep the adults safe. They can get vaccinated if they want to. No, you do it to make yourself feel better and to protect yourselves politically. The masks are simply a symbolic security blanket for you. It's disgraceful and you all should be ashamed of yourselves. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have Andrew Watkins.
All right, I have many studies here that are showing, you know, that exactly what he's saying, that a lot of stuff isn't healthy for children. If you guys want them to look through them, you're more than welcome. Like the first off, thank everybody for here tonight for giving the opportunity to raise my concerns for upcoming school year. So much since our kids went for, sent back home in March, Americans have reached 70% vaccination rate. COVID-19 tested medications to help treat symptoms readily available. The cause is transmission and other virus spreads and more widely known. We've learned that children do not readily acquire the spread of COVID-19. Children and teachers and endangered parents at home. This is a settled science. The schools are not responsible for the transmission. Remote education was detrimental to our children of all ages and accelerated the mental health crisis among children and adolescents. Of course, we know that zero risk is not an attainable goal. We know that. We've also learned that there's a political agenda that's been taken priority over basic logic and science. We also know that masks prove to be dangerous and be worn for extended periods of time, especially for younger children. The American Metal Association published in July 2021 that the amount of carbon dioxide levels in 45 children, children, the ages six to 17, that wear masks for more than five hours was six times higher than unsafe thresholds. And dangers of wearing masks include oxygen deprivation, headaches, drowsiness, reduced ability, concentrate, dizziness, anxiety, sleep issues and reduction in cognitive function. We know that having limited contact with germs impacts our, and hobbles our immune system, resulting in increased infections and setting children up for increased disasters with restrictions. Studies have been proven that mask wearing contributes significantly to irritability, difficult of concentrating, less happiness and reductive to go to school and impairs learning and fatigue. Children with special needs be able to recognize the facial expressions of ongoing development. So I ask to respect all each other's comfort levels. Parents need to have the right to choose what's best for your child. Now here's where the scalpel car comes in, not a good public reader. If these lines are crossed, we're looking at discrimination. And there comes a penalty with that. After discrimination, we're talking civil lawsuits. I'm pretty sure most of you are, are parents. You have the right to decide, just like this young man's not wearing a mask, this one is not. The rest of you choose to do that. The children's parents should have a right to make that decision. That's all I'm asking for. I think my sons can sit next to 20 kids without a mask and 20 kids with a mask.
Okay, thank you.
I do not want any segregation. I do not want any of that because there will be serious consequences that come with that.
All right, thank you.
And I will tell you.
It's three minutes. I'm sorry.
I'll quit my job and I'll make it a priority. Trust me.
Thank you.
Maybe you should keep that.
Anything you want to submit in writing, the board clerk will make sure we all get that. And our third speaker, Heather Calabria.
Okay, well, no, this, so I wanted to walk you through a little bit of history and remind you that we are an education system and we are supposed to be educators. Who was considered the father of science? Well, it was Galileo. He discovered the laws of motion, astronomy, physics in the solar system is heliocentric. He did that through scientific research, observations, data, experiments, and later became facts. During his life, he was put under house arrest and almost killed for those now proven facts. Well, how is that any different from what is happening right now? The scientists are telling you the truth about viruses and more microorganisms on a daily basis are being censored and ridiculed. It does not even take a scientist to understand facts of science. The Declaration of Independence is supposed to be our most historical and meaningful document is now being not taken seriously. We hold these truths that all men are created equal, they are endowed with their creator for certain inalienable rights. Among these are life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. The document is much more than that, but the main point here is the right to life. How do you think these children have life without oxygen microorganisms? Life is completely existent, dependent on oxygen microorganisms. If you also follow earth science, where did, did oxygen first originate in the atmosphere? It was from microorganisms. You are literally dependent on microorganisms. You would not be alive without them. And speaking of the Declaration of Independence, one of the signers that our wonderful document was Benjamin Rush, was a medical doctor. He's famous for this quote, unless we put medical freedom into the constitution, the time will come when medicine will organize into an undercover dictatorship to restrict the art of healing to one class of men and deny equal privileges to the others. The constitutional republic should be made, make a special privilege for medical freedoms as well as religious freedoms. Well, that was unfortunately not put into the declaration or constitution. And now we are in this exact predicament. Let's take a look ahead and now how this whole problem began. It all began with falsified theory of germs by Louis Pasteur. Antoine Beauchamp and Louis Pasteur were both bacterial scientists in the 1850s. Beauchamp believed through dignified research, the bacteria, microbes, viruses and fungi were actually there to attach disease tissue and break down sick tissue, therefore detoxifying the body. He believed that was all about the terrain of the body and germs were not the cause of disease, but were there to rid the body of toxins and disease. But what actually happened? Well, Louis Pasteur was friends with the emperor. So of course his germ theory took hold. Well, and now we are all living in the fear of germs and it's absolutely silly. What people do not know is that Pasteur admitted on his deathbed that his theory has flaws and he was wrong and Beauchamp was right. It is all about the terrain. So let's take a look at today's actual scientists that work with research on microorganisms. We have learned since the 1850s, but still deny the truths to. Well, that is bacteria, viruses and fungi are all genetic communication. We have 10 times more genes from bacteria, viruses and human genes. The microbiome is the most important aspect of.
That is three minutes and I'm sorry if I'm telling you, but we do have to limit three minutes to each. That's the policy we've had. Please submit that in writing so we can finish that. Okay. We'll move on to Board of Education Committee reports. I don't know that we have any new ones today, nothing for legislative or policy superintendent's comments.
Thank you. So a few recognitions. We received CTE reapproval for facts, fashion interior design, for facts, all aspects of industry, facts for food nutrition and facts, human development have all been up for reapproval by the state education department. We also have completed our summer school programs. Grades have been submitted, our administrators are working as well as the counselors are working on just reconciling classes and schedules for next year. I will be working on a reopening plan and we'll be presenting that to the board at our next board meeting. And we will be looking at getting updated information out to the community so that they will have information as far as how we will go about reopening school. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Board of Education comments. I just have a brief. I had two, but I think I only got one left, so we'll go with that one. And I just wanted to point out that I, you should have received through the board clerk report, I tried to make it brief, but I go on it on, so I apologize for that. But just something for your reference, it came from the municipal law conference I went to in July. Some things that I found interesting from topics of school reopening to special education updates to the impacts on various employee units and an update on some interesting cases that have come through school law or court cases that were settled last year. So if you get a chance, you want to look at that or you have any questions, let me know. I have the full thick text right here if anybody wants to review the slides, so thank you. If nobody else has any comments. Okay, we will move on to consideration the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Education of July 26, 2021, August 5th, 2021 and August 12th, 2021, a motion from Mr. Crabtree, second from Ms. Scanlon. Any question on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. Thank you. I'd like a motion to take B, C and D together. There was a consideration of the classifications for disabled students for school, preschool and in-home instruction, a motion from Xavier, second from, from Dr. Kramer. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Posed, B, C and D are carried. We have item E, if I get a motion with consideration, the contract award before you and item D. Motion from Mr. Herman, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Posed, he miscarried. I'd like a motion if we could to take items A through C together, the instructional pieces for the increase. A motion, Mr. Marizio, second from Dr. Kramer. Any discussion on those? Yes, Mr. Crabtree. Any other discussion? Great, all in favor. Pose that is carried, a motion please for discussion action, item D. Recommendation create a 1.0 FTE maintenance worker two, motion, Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried and resolution to create a 1.0 FTE registered nurse. You saw that in the Friday letter, motion Xavier, second from Mary Scanlon. Any discussion? All in favor. Pose that is carried. If I get a motion to, for the resolution to establish a tax rate, and I believe that's a roll call vote. Motion, Mr. Crabtree, second from Mr. Marizio. Okay, yes. Okay, yes, go ahead. Appropriate. Thank you. Okay, roll call vote, Ms. Gibson.
Hi. Yes. Hi.
Okay, motion is carried. We have acknowledgement of the gift, item G, if I get a motion placed that before, it's motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mrs. Scanlon. Any discussion, seeing none, all in favor. Pose, that is carried. Scoreboard sponsorship. They get a motion to place that before us. Motion from Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose and that is carried. We have a declaration of non-marketable surplus, a pretty long list. If I get a motion placed that before us, motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Herman. Any discussion there? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried, acknowledgement of retirements. And we have five today. You have Suzanne Brogan, school counselor retiring with 17 years of service. Deborah Carnright, custodial worker one retires with 17 years of service. Patricia Clooneyo, security guard retires with 33.5 years of service. Allison Powers, teaching assistant retires with 21.4 years of service. And Constance Reistrum, teaching assistant retiring with 19.2 years of service. So thank you to all those. I get a motion to accept instructional report. A motion, Mr. Thorne, second from Dr. Kramer. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose and that is carried. Motion please for support staff personnel report B, motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mrs. Scanlon. Seeing no discussion, all in favor. Pose and that is carried and administrative personnel C, a motion please. Motion, Mr. Marizio, second from Mrs. Scanlon, any discussion there? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose and that is carried. I'm going to make a motion for executive session. I'm going to make a motion to move an executive session or purpose of reviewing an update of the employment record of seven individuals with action to follow on one. And I added seven there because I'm putting in one more, so just have the minutes reflect that. Thank you very much. Motion, second from Mr. Marizio, any discussion? All in favor. Pose that is carry. And if someone give me a motion to adjourn, I didn't motion, Mr. Herman, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion on adjournment? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, we are adjourned. Thank you. Pose, we are adjourned. Thank you.